Do you know what that means?
Don't know.
Let's find out.
Watch him. As soon as he says we're ready, we'll go. No pressure.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Hello, can you hear me out there?
I don't know what it means.
Okay. This is the October 6, 2025 zoning board of adjustments. Call a meeting to order at 6:04 PM. And our roll call will be voting members Suzanne Ryan Chairman, Audrey Klein Vice Chairman, Kate McMahon Voting Member, Chuck Sumner is our clerk, he's a voting member, and alternate is Sabette Stormin. Jody Persson is a member and is excused. And in his place, I appoint Sabette Stormin, alternate, to sit on this case as a voting member. And also in attendance is our Planning and Development Director, William Scott. Tonight, we have one public hearing for a variance for side setback. A meeting will proceed with the clerk reading the site visit report and reading the legal
We met at the site at 5:30 this afternoon. Members present were Suzanne, Kate, Audrey, Sabette, and myself. For the applicant, Peter and Lanny Ford, owners, and two people from the neighboring condo, Georgia Wright and David Ripianzi, were present. We turned the property at 5:30. We were told that by converting the property to a residential condo, a firewall is required, which in turn defines the property as a separate building, even though it is attached to the neighboring building, thus there is setback requirement. Also observed was the parking lot and the designated parking spots. We left with a good general understanding of the proposed use of the site. Respectfully submitted, Chuck Sumner, ZBA Clerk. The case before us tonight is Peter Ford, tax map and lot number 217-23, 51 Mill Street, numbers 9 and 14. Public hearing for a variance under Section 175-90, setback requirements in the commercial district C1, Central Business District, for the redevelopment of a building to a residential duplex, a permitted use where one side does not meet the required setback. Formal submission and public hearing to follow.
Thank you, Chuck. Okay, so I like to always make a little note of how we're going to proceed. The order will be, the applicant reads his submitted application.
I'm sorry, you're not doing minutes? I mean, I'm looking at the agenda. Are you not doing an order?
We have no minutes.
Okay, so we need to say that, right?
Just say that we don't have.
There's no minutes, okay. Before you open the variance hearing, I would like to have a discussion about the application.
In particular, what about the application? Is it not complete?
I am not convinced that what is written in the application for a duplex fits our definition of duplex. And I'm concerned that the lot lines discussed are not actually lot lines, but condo unit lines. And I'm uncertain as to how that applies to a setback and a variance. So I feel as if we hear the variance without defining these two issues, because these two questions are not part of the application, I don't know how I could hear a variance without understanding these two issues.
Would you not obtain that information when the applicant presents his case, for him to describe what he thinks of the lot line?
Well, I think that this potentially falls not under the variance criteria, but under the definition of the terms that are used. So I don't think that his application is going to discuss whether or not our zoning defines us correctly as a duplex.
Are you saying you think we shouldn't hear the application?
I think that we should not take jurisdiction until we have some guidance from our attorney on these two issues.
And would we get that from the applicant?
Get what from the applicant?
Any information that you're in doubt about?
No, because the applicant does not have answers to my questions about whether this duplex.
All right. I'm going to ask our planner, Mr. Scott, are you following along with her concerns?
I don't think your mic's on or you're not close enough.
Definition of a dwelling duplex, a building accessories thereto principally used, designed, and adapted with two dwelling units of similar proportions, the living quarters for each of which are completely separate, a single-family dwelling unit with accessory dwelling unit is not a duplex unit. So that's the definition, that's what he has. Doesn't mention whether it can be attached or not attached to other buildings. There's two units, each of a similar size, it's not a single-family with an ADU attached to it. So...
So what I'm hearing you say is that any commercial property can have either an attached or a detached duplex or single-family dwelling?
No, the zone, C1, allows one duplex per lot.
Or a single-family dwelling.
If I can finish that there is one duplex on that lot, that would be this one.
So if the zoning allows one duplex on any lot, no matter what else is on it, that the zoning also allows one single-family dwelling on a lot, no matter what else is on it? So you're saying that...
I'm not saying it's, you're interpreting, but go ahead.
Well, both of those sections of the zoning say the same thing, that you can have...
C1 is the district, right? Dwelling unit definition is in the terms and uses in the definitions of the ordinance. I just read you the definition of a duplex.
But the definition of single-family is also in the C1 district?
I don't understand the relationship we're dealing with a duplex.
So what I'm saying is, if you're saying, what I think you're saying is, any parcel in the C1 district, no matter what else is on it, can also have either a single-family or a duplex, either attached or unattached?
Let me read C1, and not, you know, any parcel, we're talking about C1. So permitted uses, one duplex dwelling unit per lot. We understand what a duplex dwelling unit is by the definition, and unless there's another one in this lot, it's permitted. So the only sort of violation of zoning would be the setback, because it is ostensibly zero lot line.
I understand the point you're making. I think that when you read that one sentence, when reading the zoning, you have to look at the whole zoning, look at the way you're interpreting that sentence, and see whether that makes sense with other parts of the zoning that also apply. And if there's...
If I'm in the district, I'm in the definitions, those are the two places I look. This is where we are looking for the compliance. It does not comply with setback in that zone, it does comply as a permitted use. If there was another dwelling unit of a duplex nature on the lot, then they wouldn't be able to do this.
I understand, I hear you saying that, I understand that. But what you're saying is that in the total C1 district, on any lot, no matter what kind of building it has on it, it can also have a duplex.
That's what he's saying.
There's no prohibition to that.
Right. And I don't think that's a correct reading of the zoning.
Well, there's no prohibition to it, so how is it not a correct reading of the zoning?
Well, for one thing, the zoning tells us what we can do, not what we can't do. But beyond that, as you're reading that part of the zoning, if you think about applying that to the C1 district, you have to judge whether the rest of the language of the zoning makes sense with that decision you're making about that. So for instance, the section you just read about a duplex has a lot area requirement. So on this particular lot, and probably a lot of lots downtown, that lot area for a duplex is not met. So how can you also have a duplex?
Well, the dimensional controls for commercial is...
I'm sorry, what?
Dimensional controls for commercial is no lot area is required. It is 175-89, dimensional controls, item one, commercial, none required.
Right.
If everything else on that lot is commercial, and there is an acre there, then the duplex can take up the half an acre, 21,580 square feet, as its lot area. So it meets its lot area because commercial doesn't need any lot area.
And I would agree with that if that was the case here. But it's not the case here. The case here is that the ownership percentage of those duplexes do not meet the lot loading for a duplex on that property.
I don't understand what you mean, ownership percentage. The condominium has nothing to do with us.
Well, then why are we even asking for a setback? I mean, this is a commercial building.
Because there isn't a five-foot setback on the left-hand side when facing the building.
For a lot line.
For a lot line.
And these are not lot lines, these are condo unit lines.
No, for a lot line, yeah, for a lot line, there's no setback. I mean, if you want to make it by right, because there's no lot line, I mean typically in a commercial district like this, you would basically say one of the sides can have, you know, be zero lot line or attached to another building. But since this district isn't actually designed to be a commercial district, all the uses are separate, and all the other things are separate, that you have to accommodate the zoning by providing a five-foot setback.
So what I heard you just say is because our zoning isn't written like other people's zoning, we should change how we look at our zoning to meet other people's zoning?
No, I didn't, that really wasn't what I said. I have told you that zoning was not commensurate with a typical CDB, Central Business District zoning.
Exactly, it's not. So maybe the zoning needs to change, but that shouldn't change the way that we read the zoning presently. And going back...
What we read the zoning presently is there is no zero lot line, so as a result, you know, you need a setback variance.
So let's...
If you interpret it that there is no lot line there, then he doesn't need to setback variance, and he can...
That's right. It's a commercial building.
Right.
There's no lot line, so there's no setback.
No, there's a setback of five foot for a duplex. There isn't any determination. See, that's why the Central Business District doesn't have, you know, the typical CBD references, which is, on a multi-use building, you would use a setback of, you know, a certain setback for mixed use. There is no mixed-use definition in the entire ordinance, despite the fact there are several districts that mention that we're trying to encourage mixed use.
I agree with that.
So the failure of the ordinance to facilitate this requires variance, that if we had a typical Central Business District ordinance, then this would be a mixed-use building of which there is a two-family attached.
So I just heard you say if we had a typical mixed, if we had a typical C1 district zoning...
No, if you had a district that was commensurate with your purpose, and you don't, your purpose is basically it's mixed use, it encourages pedestrian activity and everything else.
I agree with all that.
But it doesn't facilitate the combinations of uses through an actual mixed-use definition. There is no mixed-use definition in the entire ordinance.
I get that, and there should be, but there isn't.
Right, which would...
And let me finish.
Yep.
The purpose statement is a general statement that you apply the specific statements to. So let's go back to what this building is. It's a commercial building. It's allowed one residential unit per our C1 zoning. Every commercial building is allowed one residential unit per our C1 zoning. So no matter how screwed up that sounds, that's how Wolfborough made our mixed use right now. So...
He's got two units.
No, well, he's got two units, but they're commercial units, and they're being asked to be residential units. He's a permitted one with no variance. And it's not, we don't have a mixed-use ordinance, but this building already says it's commercial with one residential unit. So if you add another residential unit, that doesn't make it a commercial and a duplex.
No, I know that. I mean, but you're right, you're allowed one residential unit per building.
So this is saying to me, no matter how non-standard Wolfborough zoning is, that our purpose statement maybe doesn't match our zoning presently. And this is a good time to take a look at mixed-use buildings, because there's lots of them downtown. I don't know when they started, maybe before zoning. There's residential, commercial, different types of commercial in the same buildings. That doesn't mean that we can override the lettering of our zoning, because it doesn't look like something that we want.
Right.
Unless we get a variance.
Well, I guess the easiest way to say it is, I, in permitted uses, I think it is, is one accessory dwelling unit per principal commercial building. If he was doing one accessory dwelling unit, then we wouldn't be here.
That's exactly right. And that's what's permitted, is one accessory dwelling unit. And let me go back to reading the duplex as something that can happen on any lot, no matter what else is on there. The fact that this particular one already allows one shows that that theory that any lot can have a duplex isn't what the zoning calls for. The fact that the duplex has an area requirement, a density requirement, doesn't match the rest of what you're saying, is that it should go on any parcel with no matter what else is on there. I just think that those definitions are colliding in a way that isn't clear and won't be clear down the road.
So Audrey, what would you have us do?
Well, to give the application the best benefit, I would like to talk to our attorney about whether those are lot lines, or parcel lines, or condominium unit lines, because your setback depends on whether it's an actual lot line or a condo division line. And I'm not versed on that stuff, but I know that that's the way it works. Two, I'd like to talk to our attorney about reading, how you read the application of the word duplex in our zoning, given all the other pieces of the zoning, not just that one sentence, but how it impacts anything else that might be talked about with regard to duplexes. And I don't think we can take jurisdiction of this until we find out some more answers of that. I don't want to open the hearing for a variance and then continue it on these two subjects. That doesn't make sense to me.
Well, he would know the lot lines, the applicant, I would think, so we can ask the applicant what they are. And as far as duplex, the definition is there. I'm not quite sure how an attorney interprets it any differently than the way it reads. And as far as the lot area, there is no lot area required for commercials, so then the duplex has enough lot area by virtue of one acre, or 1.5, I think, is the total area there.
So that is, I mean, that's something that I think our lawyer could answer, because there is a percentage ownership for each of those units. And it's like you're picking the best out of duplex and the best out of commercial. And we're going to have the best of everything, but we're not going to pay attention to the things that don't make sense.
But doesn't the condominium association address that last statement? I mean, it's nothing to do with us, the condominium.
It does if it's a lot line, or if it's not a lot line, there's no setback, there's no variance for that. If it's a condo unit area, then you don't have a variance. If there's a lot line, then you do have a variance. So that's one issue.
But they're actually drawing the lot line if we give them the variance?
No, we're not. We can't produce lot lines.
No, not literally, but it will be, it will be on the plan that that's where this duplex is.
Right. But there's no setback unless it's a property lot line, and we don't do property lot lines.
No, I'm not saying that we do.
If there's not a property lot line, and this is a commercial building, then it's owned by percentage for each unit.
All right, okay, so let's, back and forth enough. So let's start thinking about what we want to do. Do we want to, one, not open the hearing and say that this application is not complete?
I would say we don't have...
Number two, do we want to open the hearing with a continuation upon getting information from the attorney? Number three, do we want to hear this application and say, we're going to set a precedent tonight if we say yes? So those are the three choices that I can think of at the moment.
There's another issue here. Because the application is requesting a variance, and what we're talking about is essentially an appeal of decisions.
Yes, of the code officer.
If you remember, we have to have an appeal within 30 days. So if we open this and continue it, we're past our 30 days, and we can't appeal those decisions. This is what happened on a recent case, where we got beyond our appeal time, and therefore could not discuss the decision of the code officer. So what I would like to do is say, we can't take jurisdiction over the variance application, because we don't know whether it's a lot line or a property line, and we don't know whether it's a duplex or not. Then, when we make that decision, they have the opportunity to ask for a rehearing with all that information. They come back, and we talk about the rehearing on those two issues, and then we have a decision.
I do see your point about the timeframe, because this was dated 8/12/25. So this decision from the code officer has been kicking around for a while.
I saw 9/15.
9/15 is the application for the variance.
Yeah, this is what I got.
Okay. So I guess I was looking for the app, I was looking at...
That was a decision of the code officer.
So essentially, that means...
We've gone by that time.
We've gone by that time. So we need to do something different with that process. And I've always been one that was a proponent of a decision, but if we don't know there's a decision, we don't have time to appeal the decision. So I would say that we can't take jurisdiction of this. And then that decision, our decision, that we can't take jurisdiction, can be appealed within 30 days, and we can get all this information up and talk about it.
And then what section of the zoning do you have the ability not to take jurisdiction? When an application is in front of you?
We can not take jurisdiction...
This section, 175, what, under what section of the zoning?
It's a state law. We don't have to take jurisdiction over an application.
Frankly, we don't have an actual variance section in the ordinance. The variance section that's often referred to is under flood claim management, and the only reference to a variance is in the definition where you reference state law.
Right.
Definition is not sufficient to create a variance process. So that's a little bit of an irony there. So I'm just wondering what section of the ordinance allows you to not take jurisdiction when you have something in front of you?
I don't know the section, but I know it's been done before.
Well, I mean, I need to hear...
Not only that, but our attorney has advised us to do that. So we, our guidelines for our processes are in state law. Only some of our guidelines for processes are in our rules of procedure or our zoning.
Well, I got the rules of procedure here, can you find it?
Yeah.
What are you trying to do? While I look up the state law, which says 674-33, powers of the zoning board of appeals. You know, I think we only have a few choices. I don't see anything here about not taking jurisdiction, but that doesn't mean...
But you do know that we have talked about that with our attorney.
In reference to things you shouldn't take jurisdiction for, like vested and the other things that happened with another case?
Several cases. So hang on here.
The zoning board of adjustments shall have the power to hear and decide if an alleged error, that's 674-33. And then it lays out the five criteria. In exercising its powers, the zoning board of adjustments may reverse, affirm, wholly or in part, or may modify the order requirement of decision.
So this just says approve or pervert conditions or deny the application.
Okay, and I've got upon receipt of an application, this is 674-33, Roman 8. Upon receipt of an application for action pursuant to this section, the zoning board of adjustments shall begin formal consideration and shall approve or disapprove such application within 90 days of the date of receipt, provided that the applicant may waive the requirement for time. So it doesn't say, it doesn't say not take jurisdiction, although I know we've had that discussion. If we don't have jurisdiction, we shouldn't hear it. Or we hear it, open it up and continue it.
If we open it and continue it, we can't address these issues, because the decision was more than 30 days ago. There should be something clearer to go on than this, but this is what we have experienced lately.
No, can I have that paperwork back?
The rules of procedure.
Thank you.
Well, so I would make a motion that we do not take jurisdiction over this variance application.
I would second that.
So, Bill, if we don't take jurisdiction...
I don't know what that means, because it's not in your zoning.
I was going to say, what does the applicant do in that case? Does he submit a new application, or resubmit the one we've got?
So what is the finding that would warrant you not taking jurisdiction? I mean, that would give us some clarity as to what the next step is for the applicant. If there are no property lines, and the setback is not from the property line, but he needs a five-foot setback, do we put a property line between the two buildings and then get him his setback issue? Is that what the issue is?
That would be a planning board decision, and I don't think we know the answers to that yet.
Well, it would be a property owner decision before it's a planning board decision. So that if the issue is there is no property line, that's one, but a duplex is a duplex is a duplex. It's not that difficult, and this is a duplex. So we've got that one, so it's the property line issue that the board seems to have raised.
Chuck, you got anything to weigh in on this? Voice of reason?
Voice of reason. I tend to think, I would like to hear, I would like to open the case and hear arguments from the applicant, and I'd like to have an open discussion about what we can do. I think we have the authority to make some decisions here.
But what about the timeline issue?
What?
The timeline issue. So explain to me again how the...
I'm not even talking about the reason for the variance. I mean, that's a whole nother discussion, completely separate from these definitional administrative-type decisions. I'm not saying one way or the other about the variance. I don't even know yet. I don't know about the variance without knowing the answers to these questions. I don't know about the variance without knowing the answers to these questions.
Well, you know, I'm sorry.
Can't we answer those questions ourself? Can't we decide to pick? You have, you've talked about either property line or a condo unit line.
No, we can't, that's a legal question. That's, that one is absolutely legal, we have nothing to do with that. We can talk about whether we think this is the right reading of a duplex, but now we're stepping into the problem we've had recently is that we are essentially appealing a decision without having, without being within the timeframe and without noticing everybody else that that's what we're going to discuss. So they're not here to argue that. If we don't take jurisdiction, they can come back if they want to make that argument, and then we can have that discussion in a meeting.
What about, and this is just a question, not a statement. What about that the town didn't answer that decision within the timeframe? Does he not just get his approval because we, the town didn't? Does he not have to come to us now because the town didn't answer within, what is it, 90 days? We didn't answer.
You mean, we didn't appeal the decision, the-
We didn't hear the case.
We didn't schedule a hearing for him within the timeframe, so does that-
It's 45, first of all, it's 45 days.
Hearing for what? Because you're on time for the application date, which was September 15th.
But that was August, the decision was August.
He has to apply within 30 days, not schedule within 30 days, apply within 30 days of the decision.
And where's the date, what is that date?
September 15th.
What is that date?
September 15th.
September.
His application was received September 15th.
Oh, okay.
And the date on that is?
And the code officer was what date?
September, September 15th, September, October, November.
What is the date that that's signed?
Eight, August.
August what?
Twelve.
Okay, so it's a month and three days. I don't know the answer to that question.
Well, I'm trying to find a way-
You have to appeal within 30 days. You can get a zoning determination and apply for a variance after the 30 days. You have to appeal within 30 days. That is, if a party has agreed of the determination of the zoning administrator, such as if this applicant chooses that they don't like the answer, they would appeal it to the zoning board of appeals within 30 days.
That is-
They can apply more than 30 days after the zoning determination.
That is one way to read it. The other way that it has been read is that everything we hear is an appeal. It's an appeal of the denial of the permit.
There is a variance section in state law. You have a variance definition, not a section, and it refers to the state law section for variance. There is an appeals section, I don't think you have that in the ordinance either, but every, every action you do is not an appeal of the building administrator.
Well, I guess, I guess, I've had discussions about this with various people, and they fall down on both sides of this. And so I guess that's something we could ask our attorney as well.
All right, Audrey made a motion, she got a second, we're discussing. And your motion was not?
To take jurisdiction.
Take jurisdiction.
Over a variance application.
And I think you better state clearly the reason why.
Because-
For the record.
Because the basis for the variance application does not address the zoning, the legal lot lines, and does not adequately address the question of whether the duplex- Wait a minute, I've got this written down. Whether the use of the word duplex in this context is used according to our zoning definition.
Okay, and the other reason is you would like to consult with counsel?
So there's, yeah, three. Counsel, I guess, for all of these, but also for that timeline situation.
And the timeline, okay. And I got a second from Kate. Have we had enough discussion?
If we decide, if that passes, that says we don't have jurisdiction, so how can we go back and hear it again if we-
They apply, they appeal.
They'll have to change their-
Or make a different application.
No, they can change their application.
They could also make a different application. They could apply for a second dwelling unit in the commercial building. I mean, there's other ways of, I'm not telling them what to do, but-
They can just come with a new application.
They can come with a new application.
So is it possible, then, if one dwelling unit is allowed per structure, that they would come back for a variance for a second dwelling unit because it's only one per structure?
Right, yeah.
So then there would be no setback line because there's a setback for that purpose? Because our thought was it's a duplex, but-
No, I-
No, why wouldn't there, why would you not have a setback issue anymore?
Because it's one building. It's a building with commercial and residential. It is by variance a mixed-use building. We're making a mixed-use building by variance by adding a second residential unit.
Because there's a mixed-use definition in the ordinance.
I see.
So that they would, the applicant would have one unit allowed by right according to C1, and the second unit would be by variance because only one is allowed per building, and it's a singular building.
Yes.
Right.
And there's-
And per lot? One per lot?
It's all on one lot.
When you're talking about singular dwelling units, it's per building, the duplex is per lot.
Per building.
Oh, one duplex per building?
No, one duplex per lot.
C1 allows one residential unit per commercial building, so that lot actually has two commercial buildings. It's got this five-unit building, and it has the Back Bay Boathouse, which actually had an apartment upstairs that they had to take out. But I can't remember why they had to take it out. But I do remember they took it out, because I was here then.
Well, let's call the vote.
Okay, okay. Roll call vote? Roll call vote to not take jurisdiction as stated reasons by Audrey. Kate?
Yes.
Audrey?
Yes.
Sabat?
Yes.
Ryan, yes?
No.
Against my better judgment, but-
Thank you.
Okay, the motion carried, so-
So if the applicant came in with-
We didn't open the hearings, the hearing was not open.
Right, I know, but I'm just asking a question regarding zoning interpretation because you want to be able to effectuate the next step for a property owner. And it appears if there's one dwelling unit allowed per building, then the second dwelling unit would be noncompliant, so therefore it would need a variance. So whether it be the first floor or the second floor, the applicant would apply for a variance for the second dwelling unit, which would not require a setback, because it doesn't, according to your zoning, does not also require lot area.
That's right.
Correct.
Okay.
Still requires building separation, which is not an issue. That's a codes thing.
So if the codes administrator would rule in that direction, then he could reapply for a variance for the second unit attached to a commercial building? Whether attached or incorporated?
I think so, I mean, I don't know what everybody else thinks. I think that's pretty straightforward.
Well, I don't know, we're going to get some information from the attorney?
Yeah, but that's a totally different question.
Well, I don't want to work with the applicant on a path that you're not agreeing to, because if you want to work with the attorney on a path that's not going to happen, that seems like kind of a waste of money. If there's a path that you believe is the zoning board is the best path for this applicant, then let's, you know, provide that advice and move this along for the applicant, because frankly, a variance is a variance, and all we've got to do is look at it from the perspective of two units attached to a building versus one unit attached to a building. And so that's what the difference is. It's a variance for the second unit attached to a building pursuant to C1. And now the other one, the Bay Street or whatever it is, District, that doesn't allow commercial on the first floor. There is no prohibition for that in this one. So we won't want to extrapolate from other areas and say, "We can't have residential on the first floor." We can in this district, because there's no prohibition for it.
That would be part of the variance argument, correct?
No, because, yeah, I mean, the fact of the matter is, you're right. I mean, because there isn't that prohibition, then it would be favorable to allow two units, but the two units could be on the second floor. So I guess what I don't want to do is hold up a person who wants to move forward with something and spend money on an interpretation that we don't need if he goes in that direction.
Well, but by trying to advise him how to move forward without a mediator for this discussion as to what is the proper direction,
Yeah, but it's a different-
I would say is risky.
Well, no, because the argument is, as it relates to the current application and a variance in the lot line, if that's the argument, and you want to go to, and then the determination of a duplex, neither of those things are in play with a second application in which the applicant is requesting for a second unit attached to a commercial building. It's not a definitional duplex, and it's not a lot line issue, so neither of those interpretations that you want to get from counsel on what is apparently a dead issue, the duplex, neither one of those would come forward in a second application. So I guess, why would we get an interpretation on something that's moot? If you're not going to let it proceed as a duplex with a lot line and get an interpretation, then why not just determine that we have two units attached to a commercial building, only one is allowed, and the variance is for the second unit?
I see your point. So, I mean, I don't know that we have to make a formal decision on whether we would accept that.
Well, I don't want to come back with another-
But I think, I think we can, I mean, I can say that that's something that I would, that looks like it's a variance application without any-
Watch what you're saying, get yourself in trouble.
Without any pieces that I don't think can be heard under a variance, which is, with these pieces, I don't think could be heard under a variance. But I think the pieces of that could be heard under a var- Let's just say this never happened, and they came forward with a request for a second unit in this building that's permitted one. Is that something that we would be likely to hear or not? And we can wait to call the attorney on advice if they feel they might come forward with that application for consideration.
You might want to talk to the attorney for future, to clarify these issues that you raised.
Well, you know, the zoning, the zoning requirement separate from the purpose is a mess. And the problem needs to be taken care of at the planning board level, and we're left trying to make these decisions, which sometimes get us in trouble. Sometimes we're right, sometimes we're wrong.
I mean, Bill's absolutely right.
If I may, I allows one accessory dwelling unit per principal commercial building, no density requirements that it shall apply. So the lot area is moot, and because it's part of the commercial building, which has no setbacks, it's accessory dwelling unit per principal commercial building, then the setbacks aren't applicable. So what we will be applying for is a second unit in the building because only one is allowed. And given the construct of the site and the up-and-down nature of that, not calling it a duplex building, it would make sense to have that, but-
You can't weigh in on that.
If we're saying it's one accessory dwelling unit per principal commercial building, the applicant is applying for a second accessory dwelling unit, and the second unit would require the variance.
Bill, I don't think it's appropriate for you to weigh in with your decision a minute ago.
Well, then, I don't need to be here.
Just a little-
Well, the applicant can submit whatever he wants.
Right.
At his own risk. I mean, he can submit whatever he wants. We shouldn't sit here and try to figure out what he should submit.
Right.
Well, you did it already by saying that he can't submit that. So let's go on to what he can submit to get it to a unit building.
No, necessarily did we say he can't submit that. He can't submit this again, we didn't hear it, we didn't make a decision on it.
We decided we don't have jurisdiction.
Right, well, if we went and got all the answers that led to the fact that we could hear that, we could fold those discussion items into the variance application, he could come back with the same application, but he wouldn't have any idea what advice we got.
Well, but we'll have the answers from the attorney, and we could find out that we were wrong on-
Yeah, but we can't-
And then we would hear the application.
Right.
We would take jurisdiction if we're wrong.
Exactly.
So that's, I don't think we should sit here and try to tell him what he should submit going forward.
No, I'm not asking you to tell him anything, I'm just asking you that if somebody has two units in a building, asking the question, not creating an interpretation, if somebody has two residential units that are accessory in a commercial building pursuant to I, you're only allowed one, so would the second accessory unit per principal commercial building be the variance? And if that's the case, then no density requirements shall apply. So I'm not telling you that's the option. I'm asking you if that is an option, because we've already determined that there are flaws in the whole idea of a duplex and property lines and all that. So if there's that, the alternative is potentially one accessory dwelling unit per principal commercial building. So you would say that I want a second. So if somebody comes in and they already have one unit in a building and they want a second, they would apply for a variance potentially for the second. In this case, what we're saying is, we want two right away. And if it's not a duplex, then it's two accessory dwelling units per building, one of which needs a variance. Is that a reasonable interpretation, you know, so that we can not-
So he doesn't have, he doesn't have one now, though, right?
No, he does not.
All right, so you're saying, come in for two?
We would come in for one.
One, and then the other one's allowed.
The other one is already allowed by right.
Yeah.
I mean, essentially, he could build out one of them and then come in for a request for two. I mean, I don't think it matters whether there's two there now or not, because he's permitted one already, whether it's built out or not.
But, I mean, from a mobilization and a construction perspective, alone, it doesn't make sense to go-
No, I agree.
-one unit.
I don't, I mean, I, I think I would hear that.
Say again, please? Without speaking to the attorney?
Huh?
You said you would hear that without speaking to the attorney, you're comfortable with that?
Yeah.
Because there's no way, I mean, I understand the concerns about how often we've had to go to an attorney for advice. I hope you can understand that we're a little bit burnt from various things that have gone south for us. But there's no way we can speak with the attorney, and then you can then, because I understand you're trying to help the applicant, not waste his time and come with the correct application. Is there any way we can speak to the attorney, get guidance, and then you're allowed to help the applicant understand what it is he should be presenting?
Well, I'm assuming the duplex and the lot line issue is going to take some time with an attorney, but if the second unit option, you know, second accessory unit option is viable, then he just reapplies and we get him in here, back in here. And I don't see any prohibition against the second unit idea, but since he needed two, you know, duplex idea. So if the second unit, that is, one unit is allowed by right, and then the second unit being variance, then we move forward and we don't need the attorney on the other issue. We just basically say, if there's no lot line and it's not a duplex, we just-
I'm okay with that.
Leave it up to that, but what's happening- But what's happening is the judiciary is interpreting zoning, person, the legislator. So we need to take a look at that.
So are we contemplating one on the first floor and one on the second floor?
I think we wait for the application for that.
Well, no, because, you know, initially I thought it was going to be.
But we're jumping, we're jumping into the discussion.
Let's not be curious about that yet because that's in the variance application.
No, she's right, she's right.
That's what we were told at the site visit. I thought it was.
But that was.
All right, but what I'm, what I'm saying is, we're being told one by right and then one by variance.
Correct, but the variance application would be for the second one.
It doesn't matter where they are or how big they are or what unit they're in.
All right, so it's, it's not, is it still going to be a duplex?
No.
Oh.
It's going to be an apartment.
It's a mixed-use building by variance is what it is.
Because they're not accessory anymore.
With two accessory residential units, one of which needs a variance. I mean, in a strict interpretation, you have one accessory dwelling unit per commercial building. So you're going to have two accessory dwelling units per commercial building, one of them requiring a variance, so it's not a duplex.
I guess we can get from here to there.
And Audrey, you're saying that you're happy with that interpretation without speaking with the attorney?
Mm-hmm.
Then let's.
Yeah, we don't have to speak.
We'll have an informal, yeah, that sounds good. I don't think we can vote on that or direct the person to do that. You have, going to have to take a feeling on that.
Well, I think, I think it equates to, no matter which way you go, right, wrong, left or right, it equates to two units. Now, how you want to define those will make a difference as to what ordinance you use to interpret that. So he was asking for two, is maybe still asking for two, but in a different way.
Yes.
Okay. The motion has been made second and then voted not to take jurisdiction. So the, what, what Bill is trying to do is get some direction, and what I'm taking away, you asked for two, you didn't get there tonight. There's another way to still get two that may happen.
I, I mean, I guess my point is, is that regardless, it's up to the board if you choose to use an attorney. If the second accessory dwelling unit with a variance becomes the sort of method that we move forward, then the attorney on the duplex and lot line isn't really necessary.
You mean, we may, we may have to deal with that later or not, depending on what comes forward, but I think, you know, I think with some ongoing changes to the ordinance through the planning board, you can kind of clarify, they can kind of put forward some, some warrant articles that clarify some of this stuff, and then we won't, you know, this will be.
I mean, the other thing the ZBA would probably want is a variance section in the ordinance. You don't have one.
How do we not?
I don't, I, I, you mean, we're going to repeat what the RSA says?
No, no, you're basically, in all the towns that I've understood in New Hampshire, one of them being a very big town, they're under administration and enforcement, there is a ZBA, there's their power of appeals, there is all the other permits you can issue, and one of them is a variance. So you basically state that the ZBA has jurisdiction over variances, and these are the criteria there, too. So that, I've seen in past paperwork that you've referenced Chapter 6510. 6510 is floodplain management and is not a general variance section.
May I make a suggestion? Rather than hash that out now, we spend a lot of time going through rules of procedure in separate meetings. Sounds like we need to go through some things like that that you have caught, but in separate meetings, because if we need to change the variance section.
No, we're talking about ordinances, not our procedures.
Right, exactly.
I know it's not in rules of procedure, but it's a separate work session for us, isn't it?
I guess to Audrey's point.
It's not.
She's right.
We don't write ordinances.
On the clarity, but I think there's a lot more than.
We don't write ordinances.
That's my point.
Oh, yeah.
Then who puts the variance section in there?
An unending amount of things.
The planning?
I'm sorry, Audrey, she was asking me a question.
No, I was, we were just saying, there's a lot of things that can be looked at and rewritten or clarified in an administrative sense.
And, and as we get hit with them, one by one by one, we'll send them back to the planning board.
Okay, so it's the planning board that has to go back and do that, not us?
Correct.
Gotcha. That's their work session.
All right, I think we've had enough discussion. I don't think we should nail this down in stone. We've had a general discussion.
And it is really required of the board to give assistance to the applicants to the best of our ability without, you know, without making formal decisions. And I think, you know, we're, we're obligated to do that, and I think we've just done it.
Well, we can only do it to a point with the material that we have to work from.
Yep.
So, all right, I think I'd like to close that discussion and go on with the agenda.
If I may, if you're going to get a legal interpretation, why not on the, the alternative, the second unit, dwelling unit? And then that way, we have a good understanding from counsel that the applicant can apply for that. I mean, that way, it gives you the out, the, allow the mixed use by basically saying, somebody might come in and say, I want three units in a building, and then, so they would get a variance for two units, or they would get a multifamily. So my point is, if the duplex isn't going to be applicable or has questions in the lot line, then why not get a zoning interpretation from counsel saying that, yes, a second unit would be a variance, and then that way, it provides clarity to the applicant that we're in the right ballpark.
I, I actually think that's their attorney's advice that they should be getting, unless we feel like we need that advice for our own purpose, then we ask our attorney.
My attorney would tell me that I don't need this at all. So I, you know, I think that we want to, we want to ask our person because it's our guidance to them.
I don't, I don't think it would hurt to run this by the attorney and give them a, a brief explanation of what transpired to be comfortable with our discussion and know that we were on the right path or not. I mean.
We can do that no matter what the future application might be. I mean, from.
We motioned, it was in your motion, I think we should include that and fall, and take action on that and run these questions by him.
Okay.
I, I agree with Bill. I think there are a lot of landmines out there, and wherever we can help people navigate those, it's, it's customer service. And I know it's confusing and difficult for people that come to us, so I agree with you.
Okay, okay.
If we want to, Madam Chair, I think it's important, do we really want to go back to the duplex and lot line issue when the second option seems like it has validity and have the attorney test that so we're not back here again with those kind of questions?
You know what? I, I don't know until, until I, till I have this discussion with the lawyer about the quagmire that we're in, I don't know what direction I want to go about duplexes. You know, I don't know what signal I'd like to send to the planning board. I mean, other than, other than they can watch this meeting and see the quagmire that we're in.
But, but I don't think that has anything to do, I don't think that has anything to do with what this person may or may not apply for in the future.
I'm not saying it has anything to do.
Okay.
I would like my own, well, I would like my own information.
And that makes sense, yeah.
Okay, so can we go on with the agenda, which is nothing much other than, we didn't have any minutes? I don't know, did somebody do the minutes from the last meeting?
Well, I have to run those through the AI. Our minute taker left, so we're down two minute takers, one for planning board and one for zoning board, and we're trying to use AI, and it transcribes everything, but it's, needs to be edited from there.
I just want to keep current. And you got, you got from me, I sent you an email on two applications submitted, one for a minute taker and one for?
That's really not for this venue.
You got them, right?
Yes.
Okay. So then, I will make a motion to a juror. Second. All in favor?
Aye. Yes.
Aye.
Aye. Phew, that was a bust.